We have. We have the minutes to last for next meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the special call council meeting.
Okay, we have a motion to approve second. So I had all in favor.
I approve that we utilize the council meeting minutes of December eighteenth.
Okay, we have a motion that we approve the minutes of council meeting December eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
I'll second.
All in favor? All right. Okay, Ma.
Uh, we need to swear, Kay.
But I typically do a three whole thing, but if you say I do, if you want to repeat every word, it's a way to. All right. Take your right hand. I take your name.
Kay Courtney.
A citizen of Barrow County, Georgia, do hereby solemnly swear and affirm that I will well and truly and faithfully discharge the duties of city clerk to city of state of Georgia, that I would support and defend the Constitution and laws of the state of Georgia and the United States of America, and I will in all respects observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the city of statem. I do further solemnly swear and affirm that I am not the holder of any unaccounted for public money due this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof, that I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, any other state, or any foreign state which by the laws of the state of Georgia and have prohibited from holding, that I am otherwise qualified to hold, yet opposite city clerk according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia, so help you God, you so affirm.
I do. All right, first, all in unanimous is we got the old business, uh, home rule amendments, provisions to the city charter. Do we have discussion on that?
Thomas, could you refresh our memories as to whose part of the, the, uh, move was our best?
Yeah, the, the, this particular one, the one that you all can do yourself by home rule is the one that would change, um, the procedure for, by which you all can adopt ordinances whereby you all can adopt, um, an ordinance with just at one meeting without a second reading and not, and not having to go through two readings at two, uh, separate meetings. Um, we talked about it on Thursday night and, um, and as we discussed, um, it's certainly not necessary to the city's business, sometimes it streamlines things like regard to zoning and things like that, um, but effectively you all can do, uh, adopt an ordinance within a week, um, by having a special call meeting, so, um, it's for your consideration. It, it's properly before you, you all can adopt it tonight, but, um, you certainly don't need to.
And I need to clarify in my mind, uh, you said that, uh, if one council member votes against amendment, uh, the other four agree with it, it will have to have a second reading, is that correct?
That's correct. The way that, the, the way this one, uh, works is that any, any council member or the, the mayor, even though the mayor does not vote normally, anybody, any of the elected officials, um, can require it, uh, to be set over to another month.
And so, uh, we're only talking about those, uh, ordinances or whatever that the council is completely clear on. And I would say if one person is, uh, concerned or confused or anything else, it wouldn't go forward.
Or absent, everybody's gotta be there and everybody's gotta be in agreement.
I make the motion for efficiency, uh, to approve this amendment.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, I have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
It's three.
One against. Two, two against, okay, you go. Yes, okay. All right, let's move on.
Okay. Uh, new business, rolling over vacation hours. Um, as I explained last Thursday, um, I'm making recommendations that we need to allow employees to roll over a minimum of eighty hours to the next year, to allow, um, any employees that are hired in December to be able to use up their time by the end of December. As, is what we currently have set up now. Or the second option is to allow employees hired in December to use the vacation over the next three months instead of losing it in December. And then the third option that I gave was release hiring at the end of November.
Okay, we have questions.
Well, I went back and got the book out and read the personnel book, and nowhere in there does it state that if you are hired in December, your anniversary date is up in December, then you have to take that vacation before the end of the year. The way I understand the personnel policy, you have until your next vacation comes around to take it. That's why we schedule after we have been, been here a year, then we schedule when we want it. And I just think we need to leave things as is. Roll it over eighty hours. If the employee decides after, say they've been here two years, uh, whenever their second week comes up and they've already baked their eighty hours, suppose if they decide that they're gonna, well, they want the whole month off, then you're tying up a vacancy for one month.
But that has to be a broken first.
It was working fine like it's always been.
No, because how we have it in the manual is that when you turn one year, you get your hours, and if you don't use it by the end of December.
You got to take them within a certain days, it says you schedule when you want it.
It says if you don't use it by December, you lose it.
Well, I didn't see that part.
That's what it says.
And the meantime, I would like to table this and let us think about it a little bit more. That's my motion to table it, and I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion, second, to table, all in favor?
Let's go on. Okay, moving on, um, to the second item, is set qualifying fees for two thousand and nineteen elections. Uh, three percent of the mayor's salary is, uh, three hundred and sixty dollars, and three percent of the council is a hundred and eighty dollars.
I make a motion, we accept.
I'll second it.
All right, we got a motion, we accept, second it, all in favor? Okay, thank you.
Next item is appoint election superintendent to do the qualifying, and that would be our city clerk.
I make a motion also to select her for the superintendent.
Okay, we got a motion. I have eighty two. We have a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
And number four, we have the Georgia Cities Week, which is coming up in April twenty-one through the twenty-seven. We normally, uh, you know, become, join them, um, be a Georgia Cities Week every year.
And again, just tell me what, we actually, what does that do for statem or for the cities that?
Well, um, if we, um, join them, they, they send us a flyer, um, it's just like advertising Georgia Cities Week, April twenty-first through the sub twenty-seven, and they sent us a resource kit to pass it out, you know, suggested, uh, activities, planning tips that we can hand out.
Does this cost us?
No, nothing.
Well, I would make a motion that we continue doing it as citizens.
And I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, second, all in favor? Okay.
Number five, uh, we need to add our new city clerk to the bank accounts, so she can sign checks.
I can make a motion, we, we add Kay to our, uh, bank accounts, does that? Should I sign her?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion and second, all in favor?
And then, um, number six, um, I know I went over last Thursday, but, um, we do need your approval to, um, for the county to go ahead and authorize, uh, to give us, um, the ser, the water service area on Glen Jackson Road, and then, uh, we can, we're gonna give those, um, parcels that, that we do not provide water to replacing, because also in our sewer area, uh, we don't provide water to it, so we can't service sewer if we don't provide water to it. So we're gonna give up those two part, not two, I don't know, a few parcels, so they can give us, um, the Glen Jackson Road.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
And but, and we're receiving a hundred houses.
Yes, I mean, up to our, the whole area of our water.
Right, okay, the whole area, actually, more subtle.
Yes.
Okay.
I make that motion.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion, second, all in favor? Okay.
Let me ask a quick question, we don't have sewer out there.
No.
Yeah, but we can.
Uh, probably, it'd probably, well, we just now, well, we, if we're gonna do it, we should already done it, so, uh, we just now moved a hundred houses, whatever we could have maybe, but I don't know, I wouldn't think he wanted it, did he? I mean, I don't think he considered, but it still would be a costly factor to get us that far.
We should've, should've went in when they developed that whole.
That whole habits farm. But, I mean, it is feasible, but you already lost four hundred houses.
I have.
In the last fourteen years.
Yeah.
So it's not feasible.
But we have the option there.
Oh, yeah. Okay, moving on to, uh, the citizens' concerns. First of all, we have Sean Murphy, um, he's gonna talk about approval of the Black Lakes of Statem. Sean, are you here?
They're not here.
Oh, they're not here? Okay.
Uh, joint question, since we, it's brought up, didn't have it passed all the tests yet for the sewage and wat, and water pressure check?
No.
Okay, well, I mean, that's fine, I mean, well, we're not gonna prove anything until that's. I'm, I, I'm not proving it myself till all of that's in order.
So they've finished developing the sewage across the street, but it hasn't been tested yet?
Well, he's, they're tested now, it hasn't been, uh.
The sewage has been installed across streets, the facts. There's still questions about the sewage finished all in there in the last fourteen years.
Oh.
And the water.
What's, what's already there?
Correct.
Okay.
Because it's been set since two thousand and seven.
Okay.
Lot of issues.
Uh, not as many as it could be, but they've corrected quite a few, is that not correct, John? And now they own the water, and, uh, they still got a few issues.
They're making progress, it's still not perfect yet.
Right, and we still have some issues with the, actually, the planting of the the rubber stuff, we still got some questions, but they gotta do get that, so we're not gonna go anywhere with that tonight.
Do we wanna table it?
Well, we're gonna table it, but it's nobody good to talk about.
Well, first of all, you guys can't approve anything yet, because you have, they have
not submitted the pla, the final class in.
It's a lot, they got to do.
Then they have to pay the fee, so you guys can't do anything.
Yeah, it's nothing, they got lots to do yet, so it's nothing.
Just, just a real quick note, the, the reason I didn't vote for the, the home rule and the waiving of the second leaf was because things develop over, over the thirty days, that when we have an issue come up, or, you know, there's a concern or whatever, a lot more often than not, we need those thirty days. Sometimes I, I've seen things develop in, you know, in that thirty day period where, you know, uh, in, in the approval process, it's, it's paid off because, you know, new things come to light, so there's, but I think one thing I do like about it is that it require, in order to utilize it, it requires, uh, a unanimous, uh, vote, so.
But, and, and you said that, I would hope that if it's very critical enough for, to be for the public to us and the public, we need, you know, we, we have the option.
Right.
And so, if it's not super proof, it's just something simple, then yes.
Yeah.
But if, I hope we have enough responsibility to.
Yeah.
Look at it in that manner, that you're speaking of.
Okay, let's move on.
Okay, and next one that you know is, um, Kathy McCourt, she's gonna talk about the home rule and finance.
So following up on what you were speaking about a minute ago, Dwight, um, essentially, what three of you just voted for was a vote to, um, preclude your citizens from having time to weigh in on an issue that you may think is simplified and only requires one, one reading and then a vote, but you don't know what each of your citizens may think of that. So essentially, there's never a need for an emergency law, there's a need for emergency actions.
Right, that's your opinion.
And Mr. Mitchell explained a moment ago that in fact you could institute a new ordinance in only a week by holding a special, uh, special called meeting. Now, having said that, um, this meeting is being held, um, against the open meetings, um, law currently. The reason that it is, is because the agenda was not posted according to the laws having to regulate open meetings. The agenda for this week is essentially identical to the agenda that was on January the tenth. The, the items that are on this agenda are essentially the same as the ones that are on this agenda tonight, and what the open meetings law requires is that an agenda must be posted as far in advance as possible, and the reason for that relates back to letting your citizens know what will be on that agenda so that they can make their decisions about whether or not they should be here, um, to hear or talk about, or make their opinions known, um, and that's not able to be done when you have an agenda that's posted at five o'clock the day before, which has been the city's practice now for years that I know about. Now, again, uh, relating to finances and the open meetings and open records law, um, Mr. Powell, every month since, I think it was December two thousand and sixteen, that may have been January two thousand and seventeen, has been recording meetings for the city. And many months, I request a copy of that video. However, you all have a Facebook page that an employee is paid to take care of, that's a place where those videos could be posted. Mr. Powell should have recorded in these last two years about sixty meetings, that's about sixty meetings that the public should have free and open access to look at, at the time these meetings take place, or go back and look at any time that they feel the need to. You've got a Facebook page, somebody's there to post on it, it should be utilized to help citizens.
One of the reasons we can't do that is because we're fulfilling your open records request at a rate that doesn't allow the city to do its normal operations.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna disagree with you on that.
No, you're not.
Well, I just did. And.
Just saying, you know, you have to admit that, that the load that you place
I completely disagree with you, totally. And in fact, I pay for the city's, uh, the city workers' times when I make an open records request, and I pay far too much for what I am given. Just going back to the recordings of the meetings, Dwight, I am charged an hour and a half of labor for Mr. Powell to copy a CD onto another CD, that's fraud. So, um, and going back to finance and the Open Meetings Act, every open records request that is made, especially by me and several other people, is sent to Mr. Mitchell to approve. That's not normal or necessary, these are very run-of-the-mill requests, many of them, um, that don't need his approval. There is a book, um, that I have here, and I've given it to a few of you before, it's written very simply, in a question and answer form, any sixth grader would be able to follow it and not need the advice of Mr. Mitchell, and I have emailed this to Ms. Courtney, I'm going to give you a copy of it tonight, just so that you will know.
Okay, excuse me, what, what have you given her?
It is the Open Meetings and Open Records Guide, and it also.
That you requested?
Say that again?
That you requested.
That I requested? No, it's, it's, it is.
It's our, it's our guide.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. Um, it's also very similar to the guide that is written by the Barrow County Attorney, Angela Davis, um, and her advice has been disregarded, um, as far as open records go, and she's the county attorney, which would supersede the advice of the city attorney. So, I'm going to again state that this, this meeting is being held in violation of the open meetings law, and to participate in this meeting any further means that you are participating against the law, and it's a misdemeanor. So, I'm gonna say that, and now I'm gonna sit down, and you can do with that as you will.
Thank you. Okay, Ma.
Okay, next is Tammy Crawley, she's gonna talk about the home rule amendment.
I'll be pretty quick on this one. Um, the, the home rule amendment, I understand that some things wanna be streamlined and, and like, you know, I, I wanna say you said something similar to the fact that we hoped that we would entrust in you to, you know, to make the, some decisions, but at the same time, some of the citizens are feeling it, but it's just trying to cut us off. Like, you know, not everybody knows what special meetings are, um, it, it, sometimes, you know, we would like to be heard, and sometimes we would like to say our opinion, and hopeful, you know, because it, it, obviously, each one of y'all don't feel the same way about everything, or everything would be voted on the same thing all the time, you would always agree or you'd always disagree, but citizens kinda feel the same way, you know, we don't always all agree, we don't always all disagree, but one thing we do, or I can say is that, you know, when you have states that are voted in by the citizens, then it shouldn't be a problem for you to listen to the citizens, you know, when something comes up. Um, I'm not talking about, you know, minor things, I, 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 you know, but something that might be, might be for one person.
Could I be bothering you?
Right.
A logical thing.
Right, you know, and then it's just sometimes, you know, we feel like, you know, maybe it, you know, just might as well try to shut it and sit down, you know? There again, that's my opinion, I know. Um, but, you know, sometimes streamlining things is, is, is great, it's a good way to go, you don't have to invest a whole lot of time, but sometimes it's not always the way to go. Basically, you know, I, I just, I personally don't agree with it, you know, you know, I personally think citizens and, and people should be talked about, should be discussed, uh, if something's not understood completely and things like that.
Thank you. Thank you, Tammy.
Do we have any executive session?
Yes, to talk about disposition, possible disposition of the state.
New motion?
Let's get a motion.
I make the motion to go into.
I was, excuse me, I was asking.
Okay, excuse me, I didn't hear you.
That's odd, that this is about what you're raising.
Um, that's the system.
Can we talk about that for a minute? Before we go into executive session?
Sure. Ma, you wanna go over?
Basically, it's what's, what you have there. Uh, he's gonna finish it by the end of the month, because I.
Ma, can I interrupt just a minute? My life last week, I asked him what you go to, Mr. Hawkins', uh, business with me, uh, I didn't wanna go by myself, and we went up and talked to him and talked about what you and I, my shell, and my talk about in September last year.
Right.
And that, I asked him why he has not completed. Well, there again, as you see, he blamed Woody, he, well, he blamed Woody.
To, to him, to be said.
And, uh, so, actually, he has to be on the agenda tonight if he has some positive information. Now, he's sick, so we don't know what, if he has anything, I will follow up on that, uh, probably Thursday myself, I, I mean, my, my life might go with me, uh, but I will go speak to Woody personally, I have not, but, we talked to Jared, and he's wanted, gave us this information and promised us he'd, they'd work on Thursday, Friday, and give us some, three point plans, um, I know comments look a three point, but, but anyway.
We're talking about the sixteen.
Right, well.
We talked about the audit.
Right.
Yeah, just do your.
Well, not it, we're not into eighteen, I mean, we don't have, we gotta have the, take, uh, but yes, that's where I was going with it all, yeah.
He promised us, when, when we got fifteen done, he could generally, or reasonably, in about three months.
Exactly.
Between each one of them. Get, get them done, and that was.
Uh, I mean, it is a very inadequate work, I mean, it's, it's not been done properly, and at this point in time, it's too late to jump the string with them, but we did, definitely gotta stay on top of them, I'm not.
Yes, we do.
We see that now, I mean, well, we knew it was a problem, but it's become more of a problem at this point in time.
Can we clarify that you're talking about the audit?
We, yeah, it is the audit, yes.
Which one?
Fiscal year sixteen.
Fiscal, exactly, and as soon as it's done, we'll go on seventeen, but I don't, we gotta get past sixteen first, and it's supposed to be finished by the, well, the conversation's settled by the end of the year, and that's why I, my, I went the other day, because it was not completed and I was not satisfied with that, so we got, still not now. But that's, I mean, that's all we got to report at this time.
Yeah, so basically, what is, what you're reading there is what it is. I don't have anything else to say.
And, and we are gonna continue, be more persistent on, uh, pushing it to get done, uh, that is my, definitely my goal, it was my goal early to last, uh, late last year, and that's rolled over this year already, and, uh, so I mean, it can be completed by the end of the month.
And Ma, can you assure us that the accounting practices that are in place now will ensure that we don't end up in the same situation ever again?
Um, I can try to, once I have our new city clerk fully trained, I can start focusing on that, in our, um, financial.
Because personnel-wise, we, we stand, you know, we're, we're in the weeds again, personnel-wise, uh, training-wise, accounting-wise, all this stuff is, you know, we're back at the beginning, so I think it's important to keep an eye on accounting practices.
We do, that's very important.
Well, let me tell you, let me tell all the council members, anytime y'all wanna drop by there and ask questions, drop by there and ask questions, 'cause I can't do nothing with them.
Well, I mean, you know, don't get me wrong, but right here in the statement, he says, uh, you know, clearing up the first quarter of two thousand and seventeen and not ready for a start, but it'll be, he's, I mean, he's just saying, it's, well, you're just hoping he's gonna hold to what he says, you know, that's my two cents, I don't agree with that kind of explanation at the end of a.
Okay.
Professional statement.
All right. We have a motion, we're going to executive session.
I make that motion.
I'll second.
All, all in favor? Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna go ahead and make an oral open records request for that, Ms. Chang. I'm gonna go ahead and make an oral open records request for that, Ms. Chang.